Good evening. This is Mayor Kate Corsey, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm calling our meeting to order at 6:38 on Wednesday, March 6, 2024. This is an open hybrid meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being recorded at Auburn Public Library in the Merriam Room. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cablevision. Excuse me. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Thank you. The agenda for this meeting was posted in the Auburn Town website on Monday, March 4, 2024. Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on the agenda are present. Matt Toth, can you hear me? I'm going to go back to Matt. Erica Briesacker?
Present.
Vera Turein?
Present.
Steve Redding?
Present.
Lindsay Baker?
Present.
And I, Mary Corsey, am present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Molly Helsner?
Present.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Just, I'm hoping that Matt, can you unmute and say if you're present or not present? Can you dial him up real quick? I'll put him right here. I'm just worried that he's going to be out of meeting. Sorry, I'm going to ask while I'm looking for Matt. I think we lost him. I'm going to let him listen in. Would everybody look at the minutes that Steve was kind enough to prepare for us? All right, I'm putting you on speaker so you can say you are here. Excellent. Okay, here you go. You're participating. Matt Toth, are you here by cellphone?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm sorry about the technical difficulties. We're currently, right now, reviewing the minutes that Steve Redding prepared from our January 31 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Vera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Erica. I'm just going to do a roll call for approval of the minutes from January 31. Matt Toth?
Yes.
Erica is a yes, Vera is a yes. Steve Redding?
Yes.
Lindsay Baker?
Yes.
Mary Corsey is a yes. That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda, we've asked one of our members, Stephen Redding, to report out. As the trustee of the month, would you introduce yourself to the community, not the community here, but also our viewers, and just introduce yourself and what you're passionate about?
Sure. I'm Steve Redding, and I've lived in Auburn since 2021. We moved here from New Mexico. And before that, we were in Massachusetts, but we moved to New Mexico, and we liked it so much in New Mexico, in Massachusetts, we came back. And the reason I'm, you know, I was interested in getting on the Board of Trustees and serving is that I had a lifelong relationship with books that predates my relationship with my wife, predates my relationship almost with my parents. And I can't remember a time when I didn't have books around. I remember as a kid, my relationship with books became sort of a passion for books when my Aunt Dorothy sent me a big box of books, which were all old, used science fiction short story anthologies. And I started reading these books. And I realized that the subject matter, the content of these books was, I was like eight, nine years old, it was, my parents should have never let me read these books, but I felt, I felt like I was, I was growing up as I was reading. And dealing with, you know, social issues and political issues and stuff like that, and it just, it opened up the world to me. And so, you know, I continued, and I ended up getting a degree, a bachelor's degree in English. And in my last year of college, I decided I didn't know what I wanted to do with my life, but I didn't want to do it in the U.S. And so, I joined the Peace Corps, and I went overseas and became a Peace Corps volunteer. And, you know, I continued to read books from the Peace Corps library, and my mom would send me books. So I was never, I was never without books, even though I was living in this little mud hut out in the middle of nowhere. And that turned into a career for me. And I, after Peace Corps, I joined CARE International, still doing the same kind of international development work. And I worked in several countries, lived and worked in several countries in Africa, Sub-Saharan Africa. And I ended up in Kenya managing a big humanitarian project, refugee camps on the Somali border. This was in the early 90s. And if you'll remember, the U.S. was going into Somalia at that point. There were a lot of Somalis that crossed the border into Kenya. And my organization, as well as other organizations, put a lot of work into literacy classes, English literacy, but also Somali language literacy and that type of thing. And they were teaching a lot of Somali kids how to read, but they had no books. They had no, they had no actually book, actual books to read. And so, I had an idea that I wrote up a small proposal for, and I think it was, I pitched it to the Japanese government, and they gave me about $50,000 to set up libraries in the refugee camps so that, so the kids could, could read. And so, that went well. I continued working overseas until 2002, came back to the U.S. I had since married, had three kids, you know, had a whole family in life. And came back to work in Massachusetts. The library might, and I first lived in Newton, but really closer to Watertown than Newton. And my office was in Watertown, right across the street was what? A library. And so, I spent practically every lunchtime in the library. And my wife noticed that I didn't take too much time off, you know, I didn't take too much vacation. And I said, but I take vacation all the time. I take vacation in the library at lunch, reading. And so, you know, continued my passion there. Then I moved to Waldham, still worked at the Watertown office. So Watertown was more my library at that point. I used to go to Waldham if they had good books or good programs, that kind of thing. And then off to New Mexico. And in New Mexico, I was, you know, getting involved with the town of Taos. It was Taos, New Mexico, in the north of the country, in the north of the state. And I, I would have gotten involved, but the pandemic came. And so, they had a nice library there. I had already, you know, joined the library and was actually taking, they had a group that met in the afternoons at around 3:00 or 4:30, because a lot of the, a lot of the Spanish families that had been there for like 400 years, they were from the Conquistadors. They were, their kids were losing their Spanish. And so, they, they had a program to come and, you know, everybody could come and speak Spanish. And so, I did that for a while at the library. That was one of the, one of the things they did. And so, 2021, after the pandemic.
Matt just traded us.
So after the pandemic, we came back here, and we, we jumped into Auburn life. And I'm also on the Auburn Cultural Council, and we manage a fund for cultural events in Auburn. And I thought, you know, get on the library again. And so, I read a lot. I have a yearly list of books. It's always 70 books during the year that I read, and I got it all planned out. I've been doing it for the last 14 years. And if I, if I get to the end of the book list, I've had a good year. I also have been in a book club now for going on 15 years with people that, first are our next door neighbors in Newton, and, you know, it's just grown from there. And so, we meet every month, and that's my, that's my book story.
Awesome. Do you have a recommended book that you'd like us to read?
I recently read one that, it's nonfiction, and it's called Fireweather by John Valant or Viant. And it's a, it's, it's a documentary story about-
I got you back.
-how climate change has caused, you remember the big Canadian fires in like Alberta and that area, Manitoba? This is all about those fires from the people who lived through them. And the kind of, the message of it is that, is that those fires have never been seen on Earth before, those types of fires. Fire tornadoes are brand new, and it's all, you know, happening because of climate change. This fascinating book, very compelling read.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No, but now I got a-
I see Matt very clearly. Can you hear us, Matt?
I, I can, can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Yeah, I can't hear anything at all, but Vera dials me in. I can at least-
Yes.
...send out a lot of the line.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna, if I have you on speaker, I just wonder if there'd be feedback. Can you mute him on there?
Um, Matt, can I, I'm going to mute you so that we don't get- Oh. He's muted.
Okay. Can you, can you hear everything through the speakerphone?
Oh, then unmuted again.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
Muted.
Guys, this is not what they promised us Big Tech would do.
You want to try it over here? I just hope they won't-
Yeah.
So Matt, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but not very well.
Okay. We can hear you perfectly. Thank you so much for sharing. That was fascinating. Is this going to be? Okay.
If Vera dials, I can hear you through the internet.
Matt, I have a really good idea. Hit mute on your cellphone. Because that way you can hear us, but we're only going to hear you through the computer, and there shouldn't be feedback. Is magic happening?
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Can you hear you?
Can you hear us? Okay, obviously, well, I see, did he nod?
Yeah. Is it possible, can I just ask you, Alice, can we put it here without it giving you a lot of feedback?
I can throw these things.
Okay. All right.
All right. All right, Matt? Are you there?
Sorry, I can see him, and I can hear him perfectly.
I'm wondering if Vera calls me, if I can listen through my telephone and watch what I can see on the screen. Everything is very garbled with the volume.
Listen, listen, though, okay, we can hear you-
Turn down, if anything, turn down the TV volume. His TV volume.
If you turn down your TV volume, or if you hit the mute button, because we can hear you through the computer, but if you hit the mute button, your background noise won't come through the phone.
Yeah, and I have him muted from my, because I'm running the meeting.
All right, I turned down the volume.
And he's on mute on this end.
Well, yeah, but you're going to want to let him talk on, on your end.
Right.
Okay. All right, we're back in business. You're on my phone.
Yeah. We did you a lot.
That was a fascinating story.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, thank you for everybody's patience, is Molly, you're going to report out about the director's report.
Hi, my name is Molly Helsner, one of the administrators at the Auburn Public Library, direct report to the library director, Jean Collins, and I will be presenting the director's report, as written by her, in her absence. If the board has any questions, but not directives regarding the report, I will convey them to the director, who will respond to the board within one to two days with her response. And if any members of the community have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the director via email or by calling the library and asking for the director. She'll be more than happy to have a conversation with any member of the community at any time. So the responses to the questions from the last board meeting were provided by the library director the next day via email. She also has provided paper copies, if anyone would like a copy. And they're also available to any resident who would like to view them. Please ask the director, she'll be very happy to provide you with the detailed responses. Now, for this month's director's report, for facilities, additional repairs were made to the front double doors to the library. The doors weren't closing correctly. As of now, they are again. Compliance reports for the insurance company for the electrical and boiler room were done. Compliance reports to the building commissioners for updated seating and room mapping, and compliance reports for the annual fire inspection and alarm company. Ongoing updates to the children's room expansion have been sent to the board via email. If any board members have any questions about that, I can relay them to the director. For the reading, we continue reading, relocating, updating, deleting, and purchasing new titles and re-shelving. This will be ongoing for at least another two months. We have a new employee, Alyssa, a full-time library associate, started a couple weeks ago. For technology, we had the update to the catalog. Aspen Discovery started this past Monday, March 4. The process is going smoothly so far, few glitches. The information document that was sent to patrons was also attached with this director's report, that gives you a little idea, and is also available in print in the library. We are working on plans to upgrade to mobile printing in the next three to six months, once our new copier arrives and we can configure it with the new system and contract with CWMars. And computer upgrades, new cabling, and new workstation are in the queue for the next couple of months for the patron computers out front. The school vacation week was last week, and although we were closed on the Monday for President's Day, we welcomed 937 visitors to the library in the other four days and the three hours that were open on Saturday, and we held 10 programs during the four days. Friends continue to work very hard for the library and represent the library very knowledgeably and favorably to the public. Their indoor book sale was very successful, and another book sale is scheduled for Saturday, June 22. They are eager to provide funds for furniture or other elements of the children's room expansion at future date, as well as to provide additional funds toward programs. And Boy Scouts are planning to hold a clothing drive in the library parking lot, tentatively scheduled for Saturday, April 27. And that is the director's report.
Okay, any questions about the director's report? No questions. Would you like to share? I'm sorry, Matt?
Mary, I just had a question about the deep gaves for the last question.
Okay.
One of the things that intrigued me is I've asked a couple times about tracking the museum passes, trying to figure out is, what do we, what do we save per person? They went, we're paying about $100,000, that's how many, that's the cost with the $3,000 thing, those passes. Trying to figure out, what is, what do we get if we're spending maybe around $20,000, maybe more than that for museum passes? And what I've asked for was, how many people are accessing them? And then at these different places, what is the value of that savings?
Okay.
Just to communicate, yeah.
Correct. So I'm going to repeat back what you said, and correct me if I, if I don't synthesize it well. So your question is that you see that the library spends about $20,000 a year on museum passes, you want to know how many people are accessing that and what kind of value it is. In other words, how much of a discount are our patrons getting for this amount of money that the library is paying for this opportunity? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll relay that to the director.
So Molly will relay that to the director. Anything else?
Yes, yep. What was the business with Jean, some of these programs that pay us rent? I know they were paying something, probably getting that in $25 dollars per person for those programs, right? They didn't correct me, but Jean straight then out. And what was the question that I was asking, are we heard that every money for the program has a chance to participate before the same people do it over and over again? I have to read that, why I believe in this, and it's, they just dropped in, right about the same people. It's a fine, we have some progress today. Let's just get this to somebody else.
Okay. So the next question, I'm just repeating for anybody that can't hear you, because it is very soft, you're soft spoken on the, on the cellphone. So Matt's question is, what's the process to make sure that when we offer programs, that it's open to everyone, and it doesn't end up closing before people who have never had the opportunity to attend it have the opportunity to sign up? Is that correct? So what's the process? How do we make sure that, that the opportunity is available for everyone?
If I, before you answer, if I may add, because I wrote it down, how are we making sure that somebody who's never been to a program gets a chance to attend? That it's not just the same people attending over and over again?
Okay.
If you hit the, oh, sorry.
The volume up, bye. I'll do it. Oh, on your phone? I just don't want to, I don't want to cut them off. Sorry, guys. Yeah, if you want to put the volume on, that's great. I thought there'd be feedback. No, no trouble at all.
And Molly, while, while they're fixing things, you said 937 people showed up for, how do you, how do you track that? Do you count people coming in?
We do, yeah. We have a counting, tracking sheet.
Oh, cool. Okay.
But how does that work? 937 people, how does that work? Are people double counting, or what do they, how does that work?
Like, in other words, you have a tally sheet, but how do you, how do you make sure, like, how is it that accurate? 937 exactly?
They're counting when they enter the building.
Okay. Okay.
You're not IDing people to make sure they're not, yeah.
Anything else, Matt, or anyone on the board?
Well, I guess Molly can at least, I have a note from Jean on trust documents, and I just tell Molly to tell Jean that I'm going to take care of that as soon as I'm able to clarify a couple details.
You get that okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Any other questions, Matt, or anyone on the board, before we move on to the APL expenditures?
Yeah, no, I just want to second Matt's beamless question. I was actually thinking of literally the same thing, only because I've gotten feedback from people who want to go to a program, wait for the program to open, and get blocked out, and I was wondering if it was possible to develop an equitable system so that people who did not attend a previous program were given some sort of priority to ensure that everybody in the community who wants to participate gets to, most particularly the ones in December. That seems to be a very big draw, and I know people were bummed because they were watching for that notification to open, only to find themselves blocked out. Regardless, so I was wondering if it was either possible to have more programs of the December thing, or if there was a way to do it to make sure that people who got blocked out, say, last year, were given priority this year and so forth, so that we could make sure everybody got a fair shot?
Good question.
Correct.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I have one other question.
Go ahead, Matt.
Actually, it's a comment.
Okay.
It has to do with the pictures that we received from the children's room expansion. You know, we had a meeting on January 31, and we got our first notice February 10 about the children's room expansion. And I'm thinking, this was a spectacularly, incredibly good moment to show the Board of Trustees that maybe we were important enough to collaborate with a little bit about before this project, whole scale. And it's really discouraging, because we've been talking a lot about the relationship between the library and the Board of Trustees, and all of a sudden to read these three different children's room expansion lists without ever having an opportunity to, to say anything about what we might believe, what the board members might believe, is very discouraging. It reminds me of when we were doing the conversation about the addition, or what it should be called. It's just a feeling completely left out in a situation where we should have been involved in some way.
Yeah, I support, noted, noted. I support you on that. I appreciate that. I too was surprised, we got pictures of the frame that is out there, but we didn't have any, I didn't have any context before that, so I, so again, noted. And did you get that, Molly? Very good. Any other comments, questions?
I guess I would go on record as saying that I thought Jean was pretty clear in explaining that although it was intended to take place after the proposed sunroom, which is in the far distance-
Yeah.
-resources and funding came together quickly and at an optimum time, and the town manager approved the go-ahead, as the discussion and approval took place after the last Board of Trustees meeting, she wanted to keep us in the loop, and that she would provide, you know, more details after that. So it just sounded like it was an opportunistic moment.
Okay.
I just, not to, whatever, but I'm just telling you what I, what I understood, and that it was an exciting opportunity, and we went for it, and the town manager signed off, and that's his authority and right to do so.
Yeah. So just to give context, because you, you made a reference, Matt, and some of the board members weren't here at that time. When the subject came up of a children's room and naming it, it was never discussed with the Board of Trustees. So what happened was, the director and the town manager went to the selectmen formally and asked to be able to move it forward, and the selectmen at that time kicked it back and said, "Did you have any discussion with the Board of Trustees at all?" And the answer was, "No, we didn't." And the town managers, the former town manager's explanation was, "We felt that because the director is a resident of Auburn, that that was sufficient in terms of having a voice of the residents of Auburn." But that wasn't the question that the select individuals had. They said, "Shouldn't this be transparent?" So they did come back, and we did have a discussion after the fact, but I think what Matt was referencing, Lindsay, is that, that lack of transparency is sort of a, is still a little bit of a sore spot.
I can appreciate that. I just wanted to articulate that in the email, there was some context provided, that this was opportunistic and, and good news, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm sure we all appreciate it for that.
So I guess the question-
It is opportunistic, but I do think that to exclude the Board of Trustees from any conversation about that, even to have an emergency meeting, it was opportunistic, would have been respectful to the elected members.
And appointed members, yeah.
So if I may piggyback on your point, Matt, I guess if I were going to put that into a question, it would be, is there any plan to engage with the Board of Trustees or the community at large for input with regard to the children's room, since it is ultimately going to serve the community and their, and thus their preferences should be taken into account?
From the pictures, it looks like it's pretty done.
Well, it's a frame, it's a frame right now. So can you say that question again? I just want to, I want to just make sure that-
Is there a plan to engage with the Board of Trustees? Is there a plan to engage with the Board of Trustees about this children's room expansion or with the community at large? Obviously, one, one person and the community is not.
The community.
The community, so.
Right. Okay, well said. Very good. There's not anything else? Can we move to the APL expenditures? Thank you.
Those visuals were included on the email. If there's any questions, let someone answer them.
Thank you.
For sharing through first.
I know, I'm just trying to see. Oh, no, you're fine. There's no order to them.
There's no order. Okay, that's okay. That's all right. Just somebody pay worries.
So where do you want us to begin, Molly? Where should we begin?
You just want us to review it?
Start on page one.
Okay. Very good. You want to say that there are questions? So everybody want to just take a look, and then we'll ask questions?
I am doing a quick, can I, can I ask a question that's not directly related to expenditures while I'm looking at the expenditures? And this is a, so if I am remembering correctly, and please, if I'm not, somebody tell me, when I started on the Board of Trustees, you guys used to like hand out materials to all of us, including this stuff. And now you ask, like, who wants the materials, which I always do, but I don't always remember to email because I've got a lot going on. Is it possible just to put in a standing order of like, some of us always want the, like, for example, Steve, you might not always want the big hunk of financials.
I'm not a financial guy.
And that's okay, I respect that, but like, I always do. So could we just put in a standing order for like?
For enough for the board?
Yeah. Or enough for the board, except if you guys don't want it, just opt out, right? Because that's easier.
And it's not a lot of paper. So, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
So there, that's my question. With regard to the expenditures, I think that's the only one I have this time.
Does anyone have any questions about the expenditure?
Sorry for the lack of order.
You good? Matt? Anything?
No, I, the question has to do with those museum passes, that's.
Okay. Very good. Very good. So if we move on to the next section under Trustees' Business, Comments, and Updates, I send out the tactics to everyone. We talked about how to create an easy tool to be able to, you know, find out how we're doing in terms of the strategic plan. But in the last email I sent out, I requested that we kind of get a, get a feel from the director where we're at right now, so we can take a look at the tactics or the goals. And I asked Matt to kind of lead on that, but I was wondering, did you, did you get anything from the director in terms of any sort of update on the strategic plan and the, any report out about the goals?
There was an email that was sent out about this.
From me, yeah.
A copy of it.
No, from Jean.
Some of Jean's.
From this morning.
It wasn't this morning. I didn't see it. Yeah, so did I.
Do you, does anybody have that?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay. Then, then is it, is it okay with the board? I'm just, Matt, my, my request to you was this, just because you and Suzette were really driving forces in the strategic plan, if you could be kind enough to give us an update on that email from the director and then sort of lead the way in terms of looking at the strategic plan and the tactics and determining if we want to move all of the goals forward or whether we want to do some editing, you know, subtracting additions, whatever. Do you want to take the, take the lead on that?
I'll just, do you want to know that about the email from Jean this morning?
Yes, please.
The update to the outcomes report has been scheduled as part of my director's report for April or May. There continues to be significant updates to the library, building services, resources, and initiatives. I want to be sure to encapsulate all of them in the report. All of that information will be useful to the town manager by sub, the BLT, and the community. And then she starts the next paragraph with, "All directives to the library director come from the town manager. The town manager will first get the report, review, assess, and account." Now, you know, I'd be shocked, and this is part of a, I'd be shocked if the town manager wants to see the updates to the strategic plan, which is what we're talking about, not an outcomes report, but the strategic plan. What's happened with that? I wonder if he really wants to see that all before he allows the Board of Trustees to see it. I think that's a question we might have to ask him at what point.
Yep, I'll reach out. I'll reach out.
In form of our discussion agreement about the library director's goals for the upcoming year, the town manager has reviewed the comment, the report we've made available to the Board of Trustees. As there has never been an outcome report before, well, of course, this is a new strategic plan. There could never have been an update to that strategic plan in the past. We're asking for what's happening right now. We're not looking for a record of accomplishments about really what, what has happened, what has not happened, what is in progress, and what do we say we're never going to get done? And we don't need a 12 or 14-page report to get updates on the strategic plan.
No.
And we certainly don't need those to be read to us, and if we get anything, we should have it ahead of time. You know, and it's not a town annual report. It's not, it's an update. Let me just, if you've got the roles and objectives for the strategic plan, people have those in front of them, I can take just one of those and the tactics that were developed by the Board of Trustees to let go along with those. And the first role was to offer high-quality, diverse, and informative program services and resources that interest the community members of all ages. Then we have tactics or ways that this was going to be aimed. We had tactics and then what we call standard operating procedures or policies, which would just be things that you would normally have to do. But for goal one, that first standard was establish program performance standards. We don't have that. The answer is no Board of Information or Trustee information. We don't have it. And I suppose what's going to happen is we're going to be told that that's operational. If that is, well, then it is. Then another tactic was to pursue programming collaboration with Auburn Public Schools, middle and high school. We don't have any information. We know that things have happened at the elementary school. We already knew they were happening before. That's why this said middle and high school. And so I, I really put down that is, I guess that's in progress because we had some word about the teams, but that's not really pursuing program. Then increase the number of children's programs that actively engage them. I put down, this is the way I would see it, but that doesn't mean anything, because we may have other information. There's no Board of, Board of Trustee information that these have been increased over time. Then offer team programs. We know that hasn't happened. And then in addition to one-time topical programs, begin offering series-based learning programs. I guess because of some of the STEM things, that we would have some of that in progress, but I don't put that there's anything else. And then the standard operating procedure, it says, evaluate the museum pass offerings to meet evolving community interests. Regularly measure and report on programs and service performance results. We don't have that. The free notes. So just taking this first goal, we don't, we can simply, for each of these tactics, have, yes, we've done this, no, we have not, this is what's in progress. We need a couple sentences for each one. That's what we were asking.
Yeah.
And that's where I can't imagine the town manager has any interest in not supporting the Board of Trustees asking for this update.
Matt, I'm kind of feeling like you did the work of my work group for us.
Did you hear that? Vera, Vera said she feels like you did the work of her subcommittee.
Well, actually, I didn't do it.
Yeah.
The Board of Trustees did through the tactics.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what, I, I, you know, I knew that in the last meeting. You know, I could not exactly remember how we had done that.
Yeah.
You do all the tactics, and that's what they were. That is the ways of getting there.
Right.
We just go through each one of these, but it's really not, and I, I sent Vera about five, 30 or 60. What I saw as what was done and not done, it's a, it's a email. I don't, I don't know. Do you have copies of that, Vera?
I've already handed it out. Everyone has been following along.
Yeah.
Okay. So, perfect. So I don't really need to go through goal two, three, four, five, and six.
Right.
What I, what I hope for is that the director in giving us an update to the strategic plan stays to the strategic plan to see what we have or have not done.
Right.
All the other information is interesting, and we've seen it in directors' reports and the town report. But we have not really had an, in that simple response to the goals and tactics and standard operating procedures and policies. If there is anything in this, which I suppose in some places there might be considered operational, I guess we'll have to ask the town manager to have that information. Because we were talking about a succession plan, we were talking about a children's library, we were talking about all kinds of things that we've never seen anything about before assistant or associate director. And I don't know if, if any of that has happened, we don't know about it, and are we not allowed to know?
Okay.
So I don't know. I'd like to open that to conversation. Does that make sense for a way to get the update from the strategic plan?
Opening it up, the question to the board?
I mean, I like it. So Jean's email notwithstanding, which she expressed her desire to do a large report covering what she has achieved over her years as director, which has a lot of value, but is not the same thing that we're asking for.
No.
She did suggest a fresh start template to apply to the new strategic plan. That's something that we can consider. But it seems to me that with the library tactics, that framework and existing framework, which is fairly simple, already exists, just like Matt outlined. Case in point, he did one sheet with all of the, all of the information. I think that it's reasonable to go with this as the expectation that we would like reported on at the end of this year, ahead of the summer, on what's been done. Is that, if, if anyone hates the idea, feel free to jump in.
So I like that. I like that piece. Would it make sense if we had like quarterly or like, you know, are you saying, are you saying on a monthly? I know we have a, we have a arrangement, and we discussed it in our last, our last reorganization. We meet from September, October, November. We break for December and January, and we come back together in February, and then we break again. June is our last meeting. So in terms of what the board desires to have, you know, to get, to get, we really want a pulse on how we're doing. How often do we want that pulse? Do we want that pulse at every meeting? Do we want that pulse a certain, twice a year? You said end of the year. I guess I want to just say very outspokenly that I am going to make an appointment with the town manager and the assistant town manager. I'm going to ask you as the assistant chair to come with me, because it feels like a stalemate. What we need to do is we need to move forward. We just know where, we need to know where we're at to be able to move to the next step. And to, to, it feels like it's procrastinating. So I think the agreement that Vera and I had when we met with the town manager and the assistant town manager is that there wouldn't be situations that were causing us to have delays in our ability to get things done. So here we are. It's, it's, today is, we're in March. We're going to meet once in April, once in May, then we're going to have the elections. We're going to reorganize, and then we have one more meeting. So I just want to say, I just want to be very, very outspoken about this. We need to be able to do our jobs that we're elected and appointed to do. It's very reasonable to find, to want to know where we're at, how we're doing. And I personally think every meeting, but I want to hear from the board if you have a different point of view.
You know, for monitoring a strategic plan, we don't need to have a report every meeting, in my opinion.
Okay.
Maybe twice a year.
Okay.
I think, because a lot of these, a lot of these things will take time to sort of develop and that kind of thing. But twice a year, I think, is reasonable. Yeah?
Well, and I was even going to say, it strikes me as something to, to talk about in the main meeting before reorganization, to kind of have a sense of looking back over, I always think in academic years, that's just where I'm at, but sort of thinking like that. And in a lot of ways, the way that the strategic plan is laid out, that makes sense. Twice a year almost also feels like it's midway. I can understand, midterms, if you will, in the final exam. Or, or just thinking about, you know, here's sort of the range of things, and there's a report out at the end. I know, you know, with various centers and things and, and other organizations I've been in, sort of the end of the year is where even if there's, you know, can we just have a sense, where do you feel we are? Maybe like, not a formal report, but just a, hey, where do you think we are in terms of the strategic plan, midpoint? But I don't know that I think honestly that a report in mid-year is actually necessary, that maybe thinking through it like this, which does lay it out really well, and kind of look at some of these things. What needs to be pulled through for the next academic year? Sorry. What needs to be pulled through for the next year? What we feel is, has been accomplished, and therefore, how do the next, how does the next strategic plan evolve? What we want to do, or what the librarians want to do, what the staff wants to do? So, yeah.
And I think like a writer, I think it's a, it's a, it's a working draft. It should always, we should always be taking a look at our population in Auburn, taking a look at, not just you, because many people use this library even if they don't live in Auburn, but what do the users want? And then how do we need to make those changes? Well, how do we, how do we, how do we measure whether or not we're doing that? So what are we thinking? Are we thinking? Because I like that. Are we, so we begin in September? So that would be like academic year. I'm an academic too. So would we say September and December, oh, sorry, December and February? Would we say, I'm sorry, September is what I meant to say. September and before, maybe we reorganize, like twice a year, like on two ends?
Yeah. I mean, that's sort of what my feeling is, because, you know, if there's a report out or sort of thinking really deeply about the strategic plan and what's been accomplished and what, you know, maybe how to tweak the strategic plan the next time around. And then that gives, like, we get the report up, we can think about it over the summer, staff and, and, you know, especially when summer's so busy with programs and people going to things, and that coming back in September is like, okay. Here's what we've kind of thought after giving it a couple months of marinade before we go on, to think about the coming timeframe. Doesn't have to be that way, but it kind of, to me, it makes sense because it gives us time to also think through or contemplate some of these things and, you know, what are, what are, yeah, the reflection on them.
I totally agree. Vera, did you, Vera, I said something?
Yeah, I wonder if, okay.
Sorry, Vera's at the floor. Go ahead.
Sorry, Matt. Okay, so I agree with the one annual report and one mid-year check-in, but I would like to see the annual report be in May, right? Because in case of any changes to the board or elections or anything, reorganization is in June, right?
Well, we, the election, the way that it works is, our last meeting would be the first, as this board, would be the first week of May, and then the elections generally in Auburn are about the second week of May, and then we're supposed to reorganize with the type of framework. So you're, so I like what you're saying is that by, by the first meeting in, in May, that would be when we know where we're at.
Yeah. I think May is the time to get the full annual report.
Yes.
And then some, some point six months-ish from that.
Like a less formal, sort of like pulse.
Yeah.
You said pulse, you know.
Here's roundabouts where we are, but it doesn't need to be super formal, just like you said.
But I think we should stress also that this is, this is not a report card.
Right.
You know, this is, this is a platform for dialogue, for discussion.
That's right.
You know, and so, because it's pretty intimidating, you know, twice a year to, you know, give a report to the board and stuff like that. But it's not that. That's not what we're after.
No, that's right.
It's just for, so that we can, we can do our function.
Right, right. And that's all. That's exactly right. Because the function of the board, one piece is a strategic plan, the other piece is to Because the function of the board, one piece is a strategic plan, the other piece is to give advice, but not necessarily, we're not giving directions. We've never given directions. But I do, I do, I do want to say though, I'm a, I'm a very project-oriented person. I'm very goal-oriented, and it's frustrating to me if we can't move forward. So I, so I would, what I'm hearing the board say, I just, I want to hear if anybody has a different opinion. Maybe once a year in May, so that we are prepared when there's a change in the board, that the work can continue forward. And that, reiterating what you just said, that it's an opportunity for dialogue and growth.
Was Matt?
Versus a report card. Matt, did you have something? I'm sorry.
Yeah. The, the report card thing is not of any interest to me either. But I am in, in why we have not been able to get any updates to this strategic plan. And I, I think it's fine to talk about twice a year.
Right.
But I think this April meeting, we ought to have a basic response to each of these. We're not looking, and some of these maybe could not be done. Okay, fine. But what has been done?
Right.
We, you know, performance standards should be pretty straightforward and simple.
Right.
We ought to be able to know that, that that's what's happening. And as our programs are being evaluated, I think we ought to have this, we've asked since last May to get updates.
Okay.
I, I do think that we probably ought to have the April meeting. We ought to, to, maybe we, the director ought to be able to respond to this strategic plan, which is placed in 2020, of what's happened over all that time.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's valid.
I would, I, I would hope that we ask for a, an outline that is not more than a couple of sentences on each one of these for the, in, in April.
Okay. I'm writing that down.
I mean, you led with a really good framework, but just to recap, for those of us who are new-ish, who all got together in crafting the strategic plan? Of course, it was the Board of Trustees. You guys hired a consultant. Who else?
We had, Matt, did you hear the question?
Yes.
So the question is, like, who are, who are the body of people that contributed to this plan?
All the people that responded to our, uh,
Survey?
It is a survey, yes. All the people that responded to survey, the different people that we were able to have conversations with
Yeah.
through, uh, through the consultant, which didn't, because of COVID, was limited.
Yeah.
So we, we had that. A consultant that was a director and the, and the staff to get whatever input they wanted to have within this plan. And she was going to make sure that that got incorporated. And that I know that she spent time with the director, and she spent time, or provided to spend time with the staff as well. And then there were a whole lot of people from the community.
Yeah.
We had some town meeting members that responded to us, and we had a fairly robust response to that survey.
In addition, the former superintendent of schools, Mary Ellen Brunel, was kind enough to distribute the survey to, I believe, the middle and the high school students. And they, that's where we got our adolescent point of view and input on it. And just what that looked like for the board, because I did get a phone call about it. We agreed on what the questions were that we wanted to have pursued in order to create a strategic plan. Again, Barbara Alvarez was, is our, was the person who was wonderful. She called us, she interviewed us, she took notes on, you know, she took notes at, they had, along with Suzette, Suzette Dowden, she ran focus groups. She took notes on those. She called people, or she met in person with people. I was one of the people she interviewed. She took notes, and that was all compiled into sort of the community feedback. And the, the, the board really, really appreciated and were guided by Barbara Alvarez about exactly how to go about it, how to get everybody's input. And then again, when we finalized it, it was right before, I believe it was 2019, right before COVID. So I think the frustration is that now we're on 2024, and we're, we're not sure where we're at. So.
Wait, wait, wait. So was there town manager feedback also? Was there, so we have select board members, we have schools, we have community. We have the consultant organizing it. We obviously have the Board of Trustees. Is that an exhaustive list? Are there more?
Matt, did you hear the question? Is there more? Is that an exhaustive list, or is there more?
There, well, you could probably hit, in the introduction to the strategic plan, page three, the page four, four talks about the planning process that we do.
Yeah.
I didn't bring it.
The full strategic plan, it's available in the library. We, we, I think we had ten copies in the library, which was all the feedback from different people. The only feedback we had to eliminate was what the town manager and the director did not want in the, the information, the strategic plan.
Right.
Okay.
When everything in there, every comment that a person made, except those that got taken out. But that's all available in that copy that's at the library.
Yeah.
I think, or ten copies.
If people wanted to see the whole document, they could see that at the library.
And it's posted online, right?
It's, yes. The, the pieces that were removed from the document are, you're able to come to the library and view that, but that's not on, that's not in the, it's not up on the digital format.
Okay. Now, the reason I asked that question is so that we can look at the whole entire scope and recognize this isn't any sort of a report card. This is the community spoke.
Yep.
As a whole, in terms of what they wanted to see this library become and what direction it should go in. And this is really a response to a plan from the community. Like, we're not the only town who has a strategic plan. I think all cities and towns have a strategic plan. Our library directors generally report on the direction it's going in. So I don't want it to be any kind of high-pressure, like, report card, whatever. But if that much time and effort went into crafting it, there should be a report. And it should be something that the community can access. I know, I, I don't know that all. I know some towns post the, the annual responses. Whether ultimately we go in that direction or not, I think would be a town manager decision anyway. But I think it would be nice for the community and for everybody who participated in crafting the plan to hear what's been done and the directions that they thought the library should go in and what hasn't been done yet and isn't worth pursuing. I, probably, right? Who knew COVID was going to happen?
Exactly. Exactly.
Just, so, okay, so I've, you know, the strategic plan, it's great, right? It's got six clear goals. There's a few bullets under each to kind of emphasize what each means. But then, where did these tactics, like, how, what, what then? How do we get to this? Because the, the tactics are quite, a lot more granular than what's in the strategic plan. I'm just, I'm trying to understand who and how and why was it felt necessary to create this additional kind of micromanaging list of things, right? I think, to me, what's coming out of this is, you know, you, you've given a strategic plan, and it's got kind of the vision. And it, you know, it says, offer community access to modern technology devices, resources, programs, and services. And so I think, is that rightfully under the discretion of the director and the very capable, highly educated staff to decide what that means in tactical terms? Or what was the process and need for creating these tactics? Because these are, these are quite a lot more granular from what I'm seeing. And so I'm, I'm just trying to understand what was the impetus for creating these so shortly after this plan was documented and published? And I'm just, I'm just trying to catch up a little on what, what happened with this and why the board felt compelled to do the tactics.
I had to guess that.
I'm sorry. Matt, the tactics were part of the strategic, sorry, go ahead. Yes, Matt, yes.
Yeah, sorry. I'm, I'm the new one here. I'm just trying to catch up.
So, so, so the question was, I think there's the understanding, it needs to be clear, the tactics were created during the strategic plan process. Not a separate entity, I guess, I guess, I think, I think the interpretation, am I wrong? That, that you thought it followed?
Yeah, I, I wasn't here on the dates and timings. I'd only seen the strategic plan. And then I got this, this attachment with the agenda, so I just wasn't sure where those came from.
Thank you. It was part that, so, so Matt, I'm going to let you take the lead on this. But the tactics were part of the strategic plan process to be able to have measurable outcomes. Is that correct?
Barbara felt, and so did all of us on the, on the, on the, the Board of Trustees.
Yeah.
And actually, in, in private conversations with the town managers.
Yeah.
That we should have ways of reaching these goals, that we should try to define them. And, and as she said more granularly, that's exactly what happened. I think, I think I should not try to explain that any further.
Okay.
I think Lindsay probably has figured out that, that it'd be kind of unusual, but that felt, it felt necessary to do that
Yeah.
in order to be able to ever get some updates to what was happening.
Yeah.
And that's, but that, that did not happen without the approval of the, of the.
Town manager. That's correct.
And you see that in some places, we could have never put in there planning for succession in the library.
Right.
Could have done without her approval. That's for sure. And she thought that those things were necessary to expand on the goals that were listed.
Yeah. And she, she led the way. Barbara Alvarez led the way and literally crafted the tactics. So they were part of the document.
Not really.
No?
She didn't suggest by herself.
No, no, I didn't suggest that. I said she met with us and, and she was, she drafted. It was an agreement with everyone.
Yep.
And then there was looking at the feedback from the community and all the surveys. It was, she led the way. I didn't say that she did it on her own. No, she didn't do that. But, but we, we were sort of, I, I really enjoyed the process because I learned a lot about, you know, I've been on a number of strategic plans. But just the way that she slowed the game down, and we were able to participate in it, and the way that she reached out to get voice from everyone, it was a learning experience for me.
I guess, though, what was, was this same process of feedback followed to generate those? Like, because the, the document that was shared just says, these tactics are presented here for consideration by the town manager or library as it develops its annual action plans. And so I, I think I just don't understand how this was then taken. Was it accepted? Was it approved? Was it modified? Was it adopted into, like, what are these action plan? I, I think I'm just trying to understand, like, what was the process for the generation of this much more specific? Like, did it follow the same very open, inclusive process?
It sounds like it did, but I think basically this is an easy breakdown for the Board of Trustees to get a response to the strategic plan. Because along with the strategic plan was an expectation that the Board of Trustees would be updated annually on the progress of the strategic plan. That, that is my understanding of why every community has one, right?
Right.
So in pulling this out in the granular form, it's probably in order to facilitate getting some quick responses. Did we do this? Are we doing this? Why didn't we do this? Why are we doing this? Like, for example, the collections involve the Board of Trustees and the collections development. So that's something that we did last year. That was a collaborative effort, and now we have a collections development policy. Or, you know, we know that there are programs for kids, right? But have they grown? Or, you know, here it talks about, are there programs for teens? I thought, I heard, and I could be misremembering. I thought, I heard that we're developing more programs for teens. So that's a way to just kind of like, yes, no, here's what we did, here's what we didn't do versus like a ten-page document, which, right, stinks. I mean, all it to do, right? It's, it's so much easier to go through a checklist and say, I did this, I didn't do this, we are doing this. Here's why we can't do this. Having to craft a whole long format report document, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
And I don't want to put that on anyone. I just want a quick update, right?
How are we doing? How are we doing? Right?
Or if somewhere in the course of reviewing the strategic plan and figuring out the directions for the library, if the director says, you know what? This is not viable. This is not a good plan. This isn't working, and here's why. Not the entirety of the plan, but like this one point. For example, teens don't want to come here. They won't respond to programs. So that's going to be a no, because, hypothetical, I'm making it up, right? But that's the kind of feedback we want. How are things going?
Right.
Does that answer the question?
Um, yeah, it helps.
Yeah. Did anybody want to add anything to that? Matt?
No.
So what, what I heard Matt say, and I, I wrote it down, because I'm a very visual learner. So what you had talked about is if we could request for our April third meeting just an outline, a few sentences, where we're at, just so that we understand, you know, so we can shape our discussion. Is that what you, is that a good, okay. Does the board support that?
So rather than May?
So, so it would be.
I'm just clarifying, so.
I think, I think, I think I'm worried, I'm worried about coming all the way to the end of the year before getting any, anything. I think, I think it's fair to say, the report out, I think it could be inclusive if, if, if the town manager and the director agree to that in May. But I think we need to have, this board isn't going to be the same board after May 15th, so, or the week of May 15th. So my hope would be, we could at least have a, an informed discussion.
It could be the same board.
I'm hoping. That's what I've been hoping for. But is it fair to say, is that something that people would be in agreement? Matt?
No.
Anybody?
I'd like to see that in.
Bueller? Sorry?
I could make a motion to, to that we have that update in May.
Okay.
Wait.
All right.
In a, in a, in a very short form.
Oh, so, let me, did I hear you say in May, in a very short form?
Oh, April.
Oh, April, I'm sorry. Okay, misunderstood. So you would like to make a motion?
That we have that update to strategic plan at the April meeting.
Okay, so Matt made a motion. Does anyone second?
I second.
Second is Steve. Just going to do a quick roll call. Matt is yes. Steve is yes. Erica?
Yes.
Uh, Vera?
Yes.
Uh, Lindsay?
I think so, but I still have a question about what the expectation, what we're talking about and how to ensure that we get agreement with the people that are going to have to deliver such a report. Is, like, what are we asking? What exactly are we asking for? I think the timing makes sense to me. I don't disagree. I think I'm still not sure, because it sounds like Jean is already preparing a lengthy write-up.
Right.
That doesn't quite align with the expectations that the board is expressing right now. But how do we meet in the middle in what now is short time?
Yep.
Because we only have, we have no meetings before then, right? That's only a few weeks away.
I just want to read back what Matt said. Matt said, and outlined with a few sentences, how we're doing. So it would be what I call bullets. If I want to know information, if I want to buy a new car, I just write down the phrases that I need to use, and I figure everything out. It's like a cheat sheet. Is that, is that fair, Matt?
It's kind of like the sheet that, that Vera had. For number one, it could be that we don't have any information, so she could give us some.
Yep.
And number two, in progress, with a sentence that finishes that. And number three, we, since we don't have any information, to give us what she can.
So a sentence on each tactic.
There you go. So do we agree, a sentence on each tactic? An up, like an update sentence on each tactic?
That, I think that's good.
I agree. I agree.
Substantive one, not like no update, right?
Right, 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 right. So we're, how are we doing? Are we in progress? Okay.
But Lindsay, to answer your question with regard to meeting in the middle, I, I think that we're looking at two conflicting, or two wholly separate things, which we're not necessarily trying to combine. Jean has decided she's going to do this report on the whole scope of since she's been here and what she's achieved, and that's excellent. But we need a response that specifically relates to the things that were asked for in the report. So we're like, okay, don't, don't do a big report. Give us like a sentence, but tell us. Because the, the board hadn't received an update for several years running.
Sure, no, I, I understand. And I think I was more specifically asking, is she responding to the tactics or to the broader swath of the, the strategic plan? Which, like, I, I don't have a strong opinion. I just, again, I just don't understand if the tactics were actually accepted based on what was provided in this documentation. They were, okay.
Board of Trustees voted on the.
Yeah, I understand the Board of Trustees did, but, but did the library director and town manager agree that those were the appropriate tactics? Okay, okay.
Nothing, Lindsay, we could not have published this.
Okay. Sorry, I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm really not trying to make anyone defensive. I'm just really trying to understand, so I just.
This is what we got.
Because I, because I don't know what, you know, and I think a lot of folks have no idea what this process was, so.
I'm glad you're asking.
What I'm trying to do, Lindsay, is to guarantee you, this, nothing ever happened with this report. Nothing got a word without the town manager's approval.
Yeah, every step.
It's not always with everybody else's. Not always with everybody else's approval, or it voted.
Yeah.
But I can guarantee you that it's there. And you know, the tactics, that should not be a horrendous effort to be able to answer these as a, we're, we're in progress or we're not, and this, and, and we have asked for this, that big report is what Jean would like to provide. I think the Board of Trustees has a right, because of the work that was done with the strategic plan, to ask for what it would like to have, not that some big, long report that ends up being, whatever, 20 pages, 50 pages, but rather, what little things have happened in each of these areas? Any things, think, you plan on it, you know, should we not think about it at all?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
And I just want to say, you're a delightful person to have on the board, always agree or disagree, because this is democracy, and, and, and when we keep talking about the voice, the voice, we mean, you know, different opinions, different point of view, questions, so going back, I want to be clear, what we're asking for is not the tactics, but just a sentence on how are we doing?
No, no, we want, we want...
Oh, I'm sorry.
One sentence per tactic.
One sentence per tactic, thank you so much, thank you, I must be getting tired, I missed that email earlier too. So are we, so we have, are we in, so Lindsay, do you want, you're welcome to abstain, or you can vote against, whatever you feel comfortable to do.
Or you can ask another question.
You can ask another question.
I don't think I have any more questions, I just, yeah, it's mostly just a feasibility, just recognizing the date, and we're only a couple of weeks away, and, you know, there, since Jean is not here to say, definitely I can do this, or not, given other things going on, I, I am just, I just don't want it to be some anger at the next meeting if we find out that there wasn't time, and then is May an acceptable alternative? If there is need for more time, that's, I think I just wanted to put that caveat out there, that is that, can we put that disclaimer in my approval, my agreement?
Absolutely, absolutely. And did I miss anyone?
I don't know, Matt, were you trying to say something?
Matt?
Yes.
Were you, were you trying, so, so we were just voting through, I loved everything, you interviewed beautifully, exactly the way you're presenting tonight, so you are welcome, you are welcome to be on board, be not on board, give us something to think about, and that's the whole idea of a, of a advisory committee. So what I had is, I have Matt, yes, Erica, yes, Vera, yes, Steve, yes, Lindsay just wants to make sure it's a reasonable request, and that people, that it doesn't create any sort of tension, and I'm in support of it as well, but I just, I do want to say that what we've done, what we've done when we've needed a little bit of help, Vera and I have made appointments with the town manager and the, and the assistant town manager to make sure that we're not doing that, to make sure that we're, we need to function as a board, we need to move forward, and, and Molly, you've been wonderful coming and being the liaison, we appreciate that, but we do have work to do, and we want to get it done. So that was the last piece that I have, except to find out who wants to report out on member of the month next month, which is April 3, 2024, at, at 6:30. Leaning on my other ladies on the right over here, Matt, would you like to be member of the month, or Erica, or Vera?
I can if you want.
I would love that, and would you tell us about your book when you do your presentation?
Sure.
So our member of the month will be Erica Breeze-Socker next month. You, Matt's like, nope, not me.
You're all going to regret it, I'm just telling you.
So, did I miss anything? I do not think I did, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
That is Steve.
I second.
And Lindsay, second, so, Lindsay, thank you so much. All right, so the meeting is closed at 7:52, and thank you, Alice.